That it's important that we always keep our eyes toward ensuring that as best we can that we help students not be engaged with the criminal justice system. I do think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And Dr. DeFerrari, I trust you a whole lot, so.
I appreciate that, and we can, we can walk and chew gum.
Thank you again for this presentation and welcome Chief Kissinger. We look forward to working with you. And before we end this presentation, I think it's appropriate to give kudos to Chief Stan Mullins, who did serve this district very well and is enjoying retirement and is somewhere relaxing now. He may be even watching.
I know, you look back there, I was like.
I don't think he's here, but he may be watching.
You tricked me.
We want to send thanks to Chief, Chief Mullins.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now we will receive our transportation update.
Thank you, Dr. Schul and Board members. I'll be providing the JCPS transportation update today for September 26th. As you know, I believe it was four weeks ago, we provided you with our last update on the transportation and wanted to make sure, well, I did it in my, excuse me, my superintendent's report was, so it's been about six to seven weeks since we provided an in-depth report. Obviously, we've come a long way in that time. We've reviewed a lot of things. We have the RFP released right now that should be due to come back for an external audit, as you requested, on the first day of school that we had, plus our, what our transportation department looks like organizationally and maybe some changes we need to make in that regard as well. So tonight, I want to provide you with this update as requested. We want to make sure that we give you an honest look at data and what we deal with on a daily basis, the challenges we have, some of the things we've improved, some of the things we still have to get better, and quite candidly, some of the real concerns long-term nationally around transportation and what it may look like for schools across America over the next decade. So as you can see, we've made a lot of progress since August 9th. The most recent one clearly has been to bring our early childhood students back. We brought those students back yesterday. I would, I was very pleased to see 81% of our early childhood students show up on the first day of school. That was once again without that transportation piece built in. We will, I'll be talking about that a little bit later, but we did see a very large number of early childhood kids arrive, and that was excellent. Some of the other things we've made since we last met, we have what are called no-show stops, meaning stops that were built in, students may have moved, students may have gone to a different stop, may go to a different school, had about 7,500 no-show stops. So those first couple of weeks, bus drivers are stopping at those stops to see if a child is there. We've been able to eliminate that. That has improved efficiency in a great deal. Route consolidation and efficiency, found ways to, yes, we've had to consolidate routes so that we can free up some buses, and you're going to see the numbers around those as we've come. One of the things, and I'll say this, you know, I think two things have impacted us greatly. First and foremost, the severe bus driver shortage that so many districts are facing right now. Second of all, our systems and technology on day one were not where they needed to be to meet that demand. And so that is where we fell short, clearly, was that part of it. I think another part that we fell short on was not preparing the community, our schools, and you all enough to realize the challenges that are being faced on a daily basis right now. And so that's a part of this now, but we have definitely been working on that significantly. The Edge Log Parent Portal Light app was a important part for us as well to make sure that parents could see where their bus was in real time. I'm going to talk about some other technologies that we have found that disappointingly, we have not implemented in our district and should have implemented. Incentives for drivers, and so right now, I would put our pay for drivers up against nearly anyone in the nation, especially for those who are running challenging routes. And I want to talk about that a little bit. So we added these early childhood runs that were at 10, for the 10:30 time and the 1:30 time. We have to use our existing drivers to do that. We could not add another 125 routes to our fleet. It was just not possible. And so we made those a challenging run. Other types of challenging runs, the ones that were already built into our system that were challenging runs that had been identified for many years. Any route that is after 6:00 PM, that is scheduled to conclude after 6:00 PM, which is a smaller number, but those are also considered challenging runs as well. There's one other I'm missing, I'm sorry, it slipped my mind, but in the end, if a driver has one challenging route, this is for all of their hours, they get an additional $5 an hour. If they have two of those criteria, it's 7:50 an hour. Three of those criteria, it is $10 an extra an hour. So when you look at our bus drivers, if they take on any of these challenging routes and they are a part of the incentive, the attendance incentive, a step four, which is a driver who's four years in, would make $37 an hour, and their overtime would be $57 an hour. I would put that up against anyone in the nation when it comes to what we're paying our bus drivers right now. But we have added that, that is on tonight for your consideration as an approval on the consent agenda, those increased dollars for bus drivers. Also, we are asking that you increase our teachers or that certified staff who want to drive buses back to their hourly rate instead of $25 an hour. So our certified staff who are driving buses will make on average about $50 an hour to do that. After tonight, with your approval, that will be a part of the process as well. And then adding Miller Transportation with 22 buses, Everdriven is a company that helps us with our special needs students, and then eight passenger vans available that we have as well. So we've been using all of these. I think one of the most important things we found, we know that when we had a 7:40 and a 9 o'clock start time, that's it, there was a lot more leeway in between a 7:40 and 8:40 and a 9:40 start time. And so anytime we had to stop the buses or the trains, so to speak, because a parent wasn't waiting for their child, or a kid missed their bus stop, whatever it may be, when circling back would cause major delays, especially to those depots. So finding ways to meet the needs of those kids by using vans and other drivers to do that has been very important for our efficiencies. I also wanted to update you on the calendar. I think this is important for the community to know what we are asking on the consent calendar tonight. We would like to get our calendar updated so that we are meeting all of the hours that we did not go to school on the end of that first week and that second week. And so as you know, the state requires that we have 1,062 instructional hours. We would like, like I said again, get flushed, so we're not going into the summer right now. We are asking you to forgive four of those student days, and then to make up two days that are non-student days, they are staff days right now, but not student days, which are November 6th and January 8th, and transform, transfer those into student days as well. And what that would mean then, by January 8th, with your approval, we would be back on track to end, to have the calendar exactly as it is right now and not have to go into the summer. Once again, we will most likely be ambitiously using NTI days if we do have weather days so that, once again, we can finish by the end of the school calendar. So that's a little bit of update on the school calendar. And so let's talk about our challenges right now, a little bit of the opportunities we have. First of all, once again, I don't want to use this as an excuse for us, but there is no doubt rural, suburban, urban, there is a bus driver shortage nationwide. We are seeing in school districts across America just unbelievable things that I thought we'd never see, from not transporting students at all unless it is federally required, to paying parents to transport their students. We could go on and on, city after city that is struggling with this. And so that is a huge challenge, and I'm going to show you the numbers in just a second. Our bus driver call-ins, and you'll see in a second that when we have a large amount of call-ins for sick or vacation days or whatever that may be, that puts us underwater, so to speak, in the number of drivers we have based on routes. And so just for an example, our most challenging days to deal with are Mondays and Fridays, no question about it. And so just to give you Friday, September 22nd, last Friday, we had 60 drivers call in out of our fleet of about 575. Our average drivers per day is about 44. So as you can see on Mondays and Fridays, we have about 16 more call-in than we do on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. We are working hard to recruit drivers. I will tell you, we are being very assertive, using technology and some other companies to help us attract drivers, because I really do believe, right now, there is a finite number of bus drivers out there. So as we look to other counties to try to take drivers, you know, there is only a certain number of those. But what we can do is search for those that may want to get their CDL, because I think it's very hard to find a job that competes with $37 to $57 an hour. So we just had 11 drivers pass their new CDL test, and they will begin on the road September 30th. So we are adding 11, and we have six more that are beginning their CDL testing next week. So we hope within the next couple of weeks, we will be adding 17 new bus drivers to our fleet. And then I told you about the hourly bonus pay for the challenging routes, routes, excuse me, and after 6 o'clock and the $6 attendance bonus for our drivers. All of these things are things that we have built over time that we are continuing to support with more drivers. And so let's take a look at the numbers that we face right now, and I think this gives you an honest assessment and picture of where we are. So let's start with 2015. These are full-time drivers. Notice at the bottom, full-time drivers includes ORDs. We call ORDs our open route drivers, meaning they come every day and they'll pick up any route that they need, they're experts on it. So we have a number of ORDs who will just pick up whatever route is needed for that day. In 2015, which we know, you know, eight years ago, we had 975 routes with full-time drivers of 1,080 full-time drivers. And these numbers mirror many other districts across the United States right now. So this is not something that is just JCPS, just urban, rural, it is all of our districts. Last year, we had 740 routes and 650 drivers. So we were 90 drivers underwater every single day. Now remember, this is before call-ins. And so, you know, averaging 40 to 50 call-ins a day, last year like we did, we had about 740 routes and a little over 600 bus drivers on a daily basis. So you can see how difficult that was. Here is our current numbers. Thankfully, we are down to 568 routes. And I'm going to say that makes it difficult, that makes buses more crowded, there is no doubt about it, it makes it more challenging when it comes to bus stops and all of those things. But right now, we have 568 routes and we have 578 bus drivers. Adding in hopefully those 17 new ones we talked about, you know, that gets us over 590 bus drivers. But as you can see, when there are 60 outs or even 44, that puts us a little underwater every single day, and then they're scrambling around to make that work. But I can't say enough about what that has, how thin that has stretched our system. When we are talking eight years ago, we had 975 routes, and I will say this, we provided less services eight years ago than we do today, because we have added district-wide magnet schools. When we add district-wide magnet schools, that means everyone from all over the county can get transported to that school. Reminder, our geographic area we cover is four times the area of Boston Public Schools geographically, and so that just goes like how much we have to do. But taking it from 975 to 568 makes it about as thin as it can possibly be. And so for us, you know, where we were in error without a doubt that first week is not changing our systems from what we were doing in 2015 when there were 975 routes and 1,080 bus drivers, nor changing our technologies. And that really led to our issues on that first day of school, the massive delays that happened that we just had to dig in and change these efficiencies. And so I think this is an important one, I want to thank this board, because I know a lot of this, we are wrapping in new start times with our bus driver shortage. If we had stayed on the same plan that we had done last year, if we had stayed on those same bell times and provided all the same services that we have, we would have 850 routes this year, because we're working on two student assignment plans. So if you could go back one slide, please. So 850 routes, we would have 578 full-time drivers with 850 routes. And so I can't even begin to talk about the disaster that would be 850 routes, or 850 routes with 578 bus drivers. We would be having to cancel 225 routes every single day. So I think, yes, the start time got wrapped into this, and there are challenges with that, but without that, we would be in much more crisis mode than we are right now. So let's look at our efficiencies. I want to be clear about our expectations. Please note that our last school ends 40 minutes after it did last year. So when we say 6:30, if we compare that to last year, you know, you are looking at a 5:50 end time, which is what was last year, about two hours to get the last student home. And so that is our goal every single night, to get the last student off the bus at 6:30 PM. So what we did, we just wanted to give you a picture of last Thursday. Friday was more difficult, there's no doubt. The less drivers we have, the more difficult it is. September 21st at 6:30 PM, which was our goal. You know, once again, we have about 575 buses on the road, we still had 15 on the road at 6:30 PM. So that didn't meet our goal, but percentage-wise, that's pretty darn good. And at 6:30 PM, we still had 69 out of our 66,000 kids to try to, you know, to make sure we got, so continuously, that is our goal, 6:30 PM. All students were dropped off by 7:00 PM that day. Once again, I'll say this, Mondays and Fridays are more difficult. This was a Thursday, which makes it a little easier, because we have more drivers on that day, but that is our goal with efficiencies. But I will say this, doing that is very challenging and difficult every single day, and it won't get any easier for the remainder of this year, and will challenge us to make tough decisions. And so I want to talk a little bit about trends with routes and drivers. So our ridership has remained consistent since 2010. We typically have between 65 and 70,000 students riding JCPS buses every day, which I think would put us, I don't have this data, anecdotally, I will say this, I'm sure percentage-wise, that puts us as one of the tops in the nation, percentage of students that we are transporting. And so that has increased, but I also wanted to see the number of schools we transport students to has increased. So Grace James Academy, W E B Du Bois are both district-wide magnets, which means from all corners of the county, just like Manuel and Mail and all other students. So we've added those. Echo Trail, Hudson Middle are also new schools. So that has added routes as well since that time. And so we've tried to consolidate routes and modify start times to accommodate this bus driver shortage. I think we've been effective in some ways, because once again, if we hadn't done that, we'd be sitting there with 850 routes and 575 bus drivers, which would just not be something that we could do. Additional data points that I want to share, this is based on the average of the first 21 days of school. Now, we've had some challenges collecting data, because the Kentucky Department of Education has changed the code we would use as students logged into school that we was late as, on a late bus, so that the student wouldn't get penalized for that. We have had to create our own system, because KDE removed that, so that we can track that and continue to provide you with data on late students to school. And so right now, on an average day, and I want to say late right now, is actually we have a lot of buses showing up right at the start time. So if the start time's 8:40, we've got a number of buses that are pulling into the parking lot at 8:40. We are marking those students as late, because even though it may be four or five minutes by the time they get to class, that's still four or five minutes they missed. So on a daily basis, we have about 5,200 out of our 66,000 estimate that are arriving late to school. It's about 8% of our total bus drivers. Right now, we are unable to provide an exact comparison from last year to this year. For that purpose, starting on September 30th, we will have those codes in place so that at our next update and moving forward, we can provide you comparisons from this year to last year, although I feel very confident you will see a great decrease in the number of minutes. Average number of minutes, instructional minutes lost per student is about 13 and a half minutes per day. We do have, when we are very short on bus drivers, that can be higher, but that is the average. And so I think that's a significant improvement over last year, but we will be able to show you that data now that we're able to track that code. And then as you can see, average number of afternoon buses late per day is about 42 buses late per day of what they were scheduled to be. And so a lot of that is because, once again, we have drivers that are out, and we have to figure out alternative ways to cover those routes. So on the horizon, a couple of things that I wanted to say, I've talked about the technology a lot. The technology, I can't say enough, I told you this last time, how disappointed I was when I've seen what is out there. And so first of all, we can get turn-by-turn directions, GPS directions for our bus drivers. Now, bus drivers by now, they're pretty strong with their routes. They've done it 40, 50, 60 times. But if a sub has to get on that bus, what we have now, they are working off a paper copy of routes that says, take a left on this street and a right on that street. If someone is picking up another run, the same thing is happening. We need turn-by-turn GPS directions. When administration adds a stop, it automatically populates into that GPS for the bus drivers. We are continuing to expand our work with Edge Log and looking at Parent Porter app capabilities. Some of the things on buses now that I expect to be in place that we have not had in place. For the past 10 to 12 years, we have worked on tagging our students, their backpacks, their cards with pieces of paper that has their bus number and their stop on it. Now the technology is there that a student gets an ID card and scans into the bus. The bu, that scan then tells the bus driver if the student's on the right bus, has a picture of the student, and then when the driver pulls up to the stop, it tells the driver which student should be getting off of that bus on that particular stop. And if a student is not getting off of that bus, and here is a problem. We have students who fall asleep on a bus, and they're laying down, and the bus driver stops, student doesn't get on, continues on 10 miles down the road. And I want to say, this is not an issue, this is not a bus driver issue, this is a technology issue. They may have to circle back and then take that kid back. Now, with that technology, the students would be able to then, the bus driver would be notified if a student is not getting on the bus, getting off at the wrong stop. This will solve many of our challenges on day one that I can't wait to implement. To the point, within the next couple of years, I think there will be facial recognition on buses so that they won't even need ID cards. There will be facial recognition for students getting on buses. We will now have cameras on all buses that will help us monitor our, any bus accidents we have immediately. I will say this, our cameras on the buses right now are hard-driven, so when a, we need to find out if a student got off of a bus at a certain stop because they didn't get home, we have to wait till the bus gets back to the compound, take the hard drive off of the bus, download it to a computer to look at who was getting off of the bus. The technology with Edge Log now allows anyone with access and a password to pull that up, watch it live, or immediately punch in this bus number and see if a student got off the bus at the right stop. So the technology is just, I mean, our techno, it's just surpassed us in many ways, that has disappointed us in many ways, that we have not kept up with that technology, but it is something we are working towards, and we'll bring you that as soon as we can possibly get these implemented. And then continued targeted recruitment of bus drivers. We are using some advanced technology companies to do that, and then evaluation of our current transportation systems, how we do that, how we do things like add stops. So we had a whole lot of people adding stops, and the times were not adjusted appropriately, which ended up with first-day problems when it came to how long a route would take. And so that, that kind of gives you a feel of what we have to come and the things that we're working on. Future transportation considerations, I do want to say this, this is an important part of the presentation that I think is so important. We will not be at the current rate, which is, as you've seen, we dropped 75 to 100 bus drivers a year, usually based upon retirement of bus drivers and not filling as many that are retiring. It's often the same thing that is happening right now in the teaching field. More are retiring than are coming into the business, and that is not a really good recipe for what's going to happen in the future. Me personally, this is my personal opinion, I think we have real concerns educationally across America in the future of bus transportation, the way it looks right now. I talk to colleagues all across this nation facing the same thing right now. So we have gotten to a point now where we are able to manage this. It is not ideal, there is no doubt about that, and I agree, we are holding it together as best we possibly can right now. I fear making major changes to the system right now, because we would have to reroute every child, reroute every bus, re-tag every student, and go through that same process again, plus pull transportation potentially away from families that already have it. But I do believe this, as we enter the winter months and moving into the spring, we are going to have to evaluate these four options that I have pulled for you and decide which ones that we want to share with the community and make a decision on. We will also be able to give you information on the success of paying our parents, giving them a stipend, that is for your approval today as well. $5 a day to transport an early childhood student to school, which would be approximately $100 a month. We would be giving those families about $700 to $800 over the course of the year to transport their students to school. Once again, 81% of the families transported their students to school for early childhood. So I think we will get a lot taking us up on that, that is an option we need to explore. Here are some other options when we talk about removing services. First option is to transport all of our magnet traditional students, and when I say this, there's a few options. These options are only for students at full magnets or full traditional schools. We can bring some more data for students who attend other schools other than their resides, all right? That would increase dramatically the amount of routes we would be saving. But what this would do, some other cities do this, so for instance, if a student lived in Middletown, let's say, out past Eastern High School, out past the Gene Snyder, and they were attending Manuel High School. Right now, we send a bus to their house, we take them to a depot, they get on another bus and go on to Manuel High School. This option would say, we will provide you transportation as long as you get to a hub. And so a hub may be Eastern High School, for instance. It may be in other cities, it's large shopping center parking lots, there's a multitude of things, but we would tell that parent potentially in Middletown, we'll take you onto Manuel, but you must get them to the hub first. And so if we did all that, and you saw the numbers, right now, we've got about 500, we're new in 90 bus drivers for about 575 bus routes, this would take us down to about 500 routes total if we did this. And so, you know, hopefully, that would put us above water for next year, depending on some of our aggressive recruiting that we're doing for bus drivers. But I did want you to see, now, these are approximate, we are running, you know, the hard part is running these scenarios, which means you have to look at every single route to see what that would mean. So it's an approximate right now, but we're comfortable in saying, on the conservative side, that would be 60 to 70 routes. Option two would be, we would only transport free and reduce lunch students, our magnet and traditional students, once again, all magnet schools, all traditional students. The only ones we would provide any transportation to would be those that are free and reduced lunch. I failed to note at the bottom, see the star below, asterisk below, the JCPS currently transports nearly 16,000 magnet and traditional students. And so if we only set free and reduced lunch students that go to our magnet traditional schools, we would be saving conservatively 95 to 100 routes. That would put us down to about 475 routes, hopefully with that 550, 575 bus driver, which would be where we really need to be. Option three would be only, so we would use the hub model, but the only students who would have access to the hub model would be those free and reduced lunch students. So option two was doing, taking them from their door to a hub, and then the hub to the school. Option three, once again, is less, even our free and reduced lunch students must get to the magnet hubs, the traditional hubs, which would save us close to 110 routes. So we would be, you know, getting down there in the 565, excuse me, 465 range. And then finally, option four, which would be the most aggressive, so to speak, as far as eliminating. as far as eliminating services, would be, we only, we eliminate transportation to all magnet and traditional students. There are some equi- equity issues we obviously have to talk about there. That would save us around the range of a hundred and forty routes. Now, once again, if we said, you know, we have magnets at many of our schools that attract kids from all over the county, so, high school closest to us, Atherton, and their IB program, we transport students from all over the county to that IB program. But it would obviously impact access to that program as well. If we looked at those as well, we would be getting up into the a hundred and seventy-five route range. And so, you can see, if we did this right here, you're starting to get down now closer to about five hun- or, excuse me, four hundred and fifteen, four hundred and twenty routes with hopefully those five hundred and seventy-five bus drivers. So, none of these are easy answers, none of them are things that we want to do. We provide more services than any other district, I would say, anywhere, and that's why our numbers are so high. Um, I would remind you that no matter what, our special need transport students receive transportation in all scenarios, and so, if it is on the student's IEP, we federally must provide transportation to that student and their school. There are some things around McKinney-Vento as well for homeless students that we must provide transportation as well. Those are the mandated transportation that we have no choice around. But we did want to provide these four options, these are not exhaustive, so to speak, these are four options that we could use. I think, in my opinion, what we need to do with this, um, is really have some conversations in the community. We cannot continue, though, with the services that we provide with crowd, the very, um, uncrowded buses, so to speak, um, without giving somewhere. And that giving somewhere is late to school, late picking up, all of those things. Once again, if I'd had it to do over again, I would have presented this more in the June range so that we could see that this, this is what we are facing, but we did not do that. But these are four options that we can consider, I think, taking them to the community, having honest conversations throughout the course of the year, and then implementing one of these, um, before we start next year is going to be imperative for us. And so, that concludes, thank you for your patience on that, I know that was a little bit longer, but I think it was very important information for all of you to have as we continue to update you on this. Once again, uh, we should have a selection for our RFP, for the external auditor, in the next couple of weeks, we'll share that with you. As we do that, we will get some recommendations back, we're asking in three months on day one problems, and then more like a six-month when we look at our transportation system as a whole and some recommendations to this board. Thank you, and we'll take any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Polio. We know this has been a tough two months, but, uh, you have led values, man, we appreciate you. Mr. Marshall?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Shaw. Uh, no questions, just a quick comment, I think this is a great time to highlight showcase the schools coming up. So, for those families that may be frustrated with those longer bus rides, there's a great opportunity to get to know other schools and other options, other leaders that may be closer to their home and still can provide a great educational experience. So, that's all I want to throw out there, thank everybody for their hard work, it has not been easy, but, um, we're just hoping that as we move forward, our community accepts the reality of the situation and how much everyone is doing the most that they can with what they have right now, so, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. I would like to reiterate, with our new student assignment plan that was passed in June of twenty twenty-one, all of our students have the opportunity, K, six, nine, we'll continue to do that, to go to a school close to their home if that's what they choose. And so, when we hear narratives around, stop, you know, every kid that is not choosing their school choice close to home, that's a family choice, that is not a district choice.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Ms. Duncan?
Well, this is, this is kind of hard because I know so much work is going into all of this and so much time is, is spent, um, creating this proposal or these proposals. Um, but, you know, there's so many, so many things that are sales out there right now and, and those are what we hear about, um, when kids don't get to school. And, I mean, and you're here twenty minutes to fifty minutes, and you said average thirteen, but, uh, any of those kids not getting to school on time is a, is a difficult thing for, for the child to come into the class and, and always be late like that, that's very difficult. Um, we have the, uh, elementary kids, uh, and I keep worrying about, we've got them coming home late and you say six-thirty and seven, and, you know, right now, it's light and then, um, in another few weeks, it's going to be dark and they're going to be getting off these buses. And to me, that's not a good system, if you can, if you have to let elementary kids get off buses in the dark and walk to their homes, um, that's, that's not a good system. There, there's something, uh, way wrong with that. And I, you know...
If I could, I would like to add, last year, we had kids being dropped off elementary at six o'clock and it gets dark at five-twenty
Right.
In November, December, January, and February, so, I don't, yes, it is later, but that was happening last year as well.
Well, it's not, it's not good, though. Um, I don't want them out there in the dark walking and, and that, that to me is, is just not a good system. But, um, we're doing what we have to do right now and understand that. You know, one of the things, this is all fueled by our driver shortage, and while we know this is happening everywhere, Dr. Polio, if we talk to drivers and people who have just recently retired, who are calling, they are calling, and they are telling you, telling us what has driven them out. And let's assume that if behavior is driving them out, because they said it's not the hours and it's not money, it's, it's the behavior of the students and the unpredictable, uh, nature of, of people getting on their buses, uh, not the, the treatment that they receive while they're on the buses, uh, from the students. And let's assume that that is the reason that they're leaving us and that we can't get them. We've got to stop the bleeding, I mean, we can, we can try and increase riders, like we're, or drivers, like we're, we're doing, and those, those are good proposals. Um, getting teachers, more teachers to, to drive for us is great. I think we ought to look at our maintenance people as well and see if we can offer them, uh, twenty-five dollars an hour like the bus drivers to be able to help us because a lot of them would be willing to do that. Um, but, and we can re- reduce our riders, but if we keep bleeding drivers, we've got to figure out what's causing them to go and, and we've got to talk with them and we've got to hear from them so that they, uh, tell us who is not supporting them, not, not us, but tell you who is not supporting them. Um, because I'm telling you, they're seeing that consequences aren't being met and that students are, uh, when they, it's like referrals are, are not productive. They turn them in, they quit turning them in on, in so many cases because they're not productive. So, I, I just want us to, to keep thinking, how can we, if, if it is behavior, what can we do to stop this from driving our drivers away, um, the way that they are? And, uh, if I, you know, if we didn't hear from people recently retired and were telling you why they got out, uh, you know, I, I could dismiss it, but I can't dismiss it like this. One of the things that, uh, I had a, a question
May I respond to that?
Sure.
Well, I think that, um, you know, one of my major frustrations, Ms. Duncan, is I balance every single day the, um, our accusations of us over-disciplining students and then the, uh, uh, of us under-disciplining students. And I hear it equally. And I said to legislators yesterday, "How can we be accused at the same time of over-disciplining students and under-disciplining students?" And so, yeah, the, the, the real challenge comes with special need students, without a doubt, because we are required by law to transport students, um, if they're special need. There is, there is not a way we can say you are not allowed to transport students. But, you know, I am open to that conversation, and if, if that is something that this board wants to entertain, um, around not allowing students to ride the bus after certain amounts, that's something we can discuss. I will tell you, the impact that will have on achievement will be fairly high, and so, we've just got to balance that out and say, "What are the unintended consequences of that?" Um, and so, I, but I'm, I, you know, we are, we are open to that discussion, there is not at any time, you know, we don't want to be supportive, but this is a narrative nearly in every city and, and district in America right now, and so, it's obviously a greater issue than just the eight of us can tackle sitting up here, but I'm open to that conversation, I'm open to that conversation with bus drivers.
Well, I hope so, um, because I, I do think, I don't want that to be something that's, that's causing us to bleed people the way that we are, and I know that, I know that it is, and we'll, we'll see whether, whether this continues or not because we're trying to get more in, and if we're trying to get more in and we're losing them still, uh, we need to know, uh, why, but what are we doing wrong on that? What about, uh, you mentioned instructional minutes a while ago, and are, does the state look at that for us when our students are missing instructional time like this? I mean, is this going to come back on us in some way?
Uh, no, it's not, this, uh, to my understanding, though, that is, um, something that is excused by, um, because of buses, it's not against the family or the school district, and what we found is nearly every district in the Commonwealth is struggling with this right now. And I'm going to tell you, an option, uh, option I did not propose that most districts are using right now in the state is we just say, "We don't have a bus for you today, sorry." And we send out notice in the morning and say, "Bus twenty-eighty-three will not run today, good luck, you know, get, get to school." We have not done that, there have been some instances, you know, our policies and procedures have said not to do that, we've had a few instances of that where we've had to deal with, with miscommunication, but, you know, that is an option as well, that if we get to a certain point, we just announce, "These buses will not run today." I don't think that's ideal, but that is something that could be done.
Yeah. Well, I had a, had a complaint today on the five-dollar gas card, which people are not understanding, we're not really meaning that that's going to pay for all your gasoline, we're really meaning that that's money we're willing to, to, to give to you, to help you toward that gas expense, and, because, uh, we know at five dollars a day, it might be more than that, especially if they're transporting more than one child
And, and that may be something to consider when we talk about outside of early childhood. Remember, we assign students to early childhood based upon the facility closest to their home.
Right.
And so, you know, there is, uh, most of the students are being assigned, I can't say all of them, but most of the students are being assigned within a few miles of their home.
No, I, I had, I thought about that, uh, suggestion a, a little bit, and then, uh, for me, I, I, I think people have to understand, it could be zero. You know, we're, we're just trying to give something toward that to help them, uh, with the cost of transporting their kids. Um, but I do think that's an option that we need to, to keep in our, our thoughts, um, how we can help parents, encourage them to, to do the transporting. But all that has its own complications too.
Correct.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Mr. Craig?
Uh, thoughts on what the community feedback proposal will look like, or have you had an opportunity to consider that?
On the four options?
On the four options.
I really have not yet at this point, had the, uh, ability to get the team together and say what that will be. I mean, obviously, what we've been very successful in is doing some virtual online ones, we get the absolute most feedback when we do that and allow everyone to, as opposed to being in-person, but as we always do, I think it's going to have to be a combination of both and really making sure we talk to all families. Um, I just think the community needs to know that, you know, the days of all students being transported to all schools is, is at the end of that road, and, um, and so, we're just going to have to have some discussions about what that will look like. Um, but, so, we don't have that now, but I know it will need to be substantial.
Initial feedback, just from the people who's, yeah, but I speak to a lot of magnet and traditional parents in the east end, and I think a lot of people are excited about the hub idea as opposed to just losing transportation, which they know is also on the table. But I think that there would be support across the county for at least that option.
I think anecdotally, I've gotten from them as well that they would support the hub model, so I think that's something we've got to really look into. The challenge we have to find is where we place those hubs in a safe way, where we don't burden our current schools. So, if we use Ballard High School or Eastern High School as a hub right now, um, there's a lot of traffic going into those schools already to start the school days, and we don't want to add five hundred more cars coming in at the same time, so...
But there are a lot of shopping centers out there.
So, that's what, and making sure it's safe, so, it, it's going to take some planning, uh, but I think that's a very valid option for us to consider.
Um, anticipated timeline for this because this board is going to need to have a time to make a decision before June of twenty-four, of course.
What we would like to do, um, like I said, when we first started this, we talked about possibly making some adjustments. Um, when we had a discussion about it, though, there was no way we were going to change all the routes or make better efficiency without eliminating some of the transportation. And so, um, we just felt like we've gotten it to a place that's not ideal, but much, much better than it was. And so, um, you know, I would like to bring, as we start to discuss this in January, like we've done, I think our most effective change votes have been when we discussed them in the wintertime, have a month or two, six to eight weeks of communication, uh, with the community, and then vote, you know, late February, early March, and it gives enough time for families, if they need to change schools, they can change schools, uh, but I think that's what we're going to have to, that's the timeline I'm thinking about.
Is the current system sustainable without us trying to do one of these four options in the second semester?
Um, here's what we're going to do, we're going to keep exploring these, obviously, the hub, the one that is the lightest, I will say, I don't know if that's the right word or not, to implement, where we're not eliminating altogether, would be one that we're going to continue to keep exploring and potentially look at if we get to a spot in December where it is not sustainable, it may be something we would implement for January. Um, the challenge is, once again, um, you know, uh, our bus drivers are just doing an amazing job, and, uh, you know, I know it would help, but would also require us to reroute fifteen thousand kids, and so, it would be rerouting a whole lot of buses. So, we are using that as a potential, I would like to say, yes, it is sustainable to the end of the year, but if something does start to, um, you know, show fissures and cracks in it, we would bring you that plan.
I know if we had to do that, we need some precision around the actual number of routes that we saved and
Correct.
We have that precision. Uh, just taking a step back and looking backwards, we don't have, uh, data points to compare to last year yet, but do you think that we're still saving considerable minutes in the classroom as compared to where we were last year?
Yeah, I don't want to get out in front of that too much without seeing the data. My feeling is, yes, I mean, we were, you know, we were getting daily students to school two and three hours late last year, and so, I mean, that was a whole list of buses, and so, you know, with many of them being much shorter time, and that's still a problem, as Ms. Duncan said, I don't want to minimize ten minutes or twenty minutes missing class, but there's definitely a difference in two hours or three hours, and so, um, but I don't want to say that for sure until I get the data, but my feeling is, yes, but I really need to get a better picture of the data before I guarantee that.
And the timeline for the data was?
Well, we are starting with the ability to code it, four schools to come in, um, starting neck, next week, or October ninth when we come back, so we should have a multiple re- week report for you by the, uh, uh, second or third week in October.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Ms. McIntosh?
Thank you. I want to, I'm going to try to be brief because I have a lot of thoughts and, and questions, um, and I know brevity is not my gift. I do want to piggyback on some of the things that, uh, Board Member Duncan was discussing with regard to student discipline, and, um, I just want to echo that that is the number one thing that I hear
Mm-hmm.
About from staff members, parents, bus drivers, other students, um, that there are kids who don't feel safe to ride their bus because the other students on their bus, um, behave in such ways that they cause fear for the other kids, and so, then it becomes not the student who has been, um, violent or dangerous or bullying, but rather the other but rather the other students who have to then adjust how they get to and from school. And their parents are the ones who are inconvenienced or having a difficulty. So I do want to explore those conversations about, um, long-term suspensions or removals. And I understand that there are some, um, legalities with the federal laws, um, for students with IEPs. Not all IEPs do have to have transportation written into them. Um, and so I think that that's something that we could consider moving forward when our, when our teams are writing the IEPs, if it's, um.
I would also think that part of the discussion needs to be what data from federal government, such as Office of Civil Rights, would be considered a violation there as well. Um, I mean, we are getting into very difficult waters.
I absolutely understand that, but I also want to consider the civil rights of the students who have been put in.
But it's not my decision. It's not, I'm not saying I'm the one deciding. I'm saying that is, that is what we have to navigate.
Sure, sure. But I, I think that, um, that's definitely something we have to consider. Um, because the parents who are sending their kids to school who repeatedly fight, and I'm not talking about typical kid behaviors. And I want to make that very clear. And I'm not discussing, or I'm not, you know, intending this to be for students with learning differences. I'm talking about violent behaviors, the constant fighting, multiple fights, um, bringing weapons to school, coming to school with, um, ankle monitors because the court system finds it important enough to keep track of their whereabouts. I think those are the students that we're talking about. We're not talking about paper wides and spit wides and, um, playing music too loud, certainly. Um, I, I think we need to explore those conversations. Also, um, with regard to, um, the bus drivers and their pay, I, I support paying them everything that they're worth. I'm not sure, um, how many teachers will have take us up, how many we have in the past. I know we had some data on that before because that just makes really long days. So I think, um, the recruitment and the retention of the folks that we have are probably going to be.
It's not a huge number, but there are some, and we lost some because it went from, it went to twenty-five dollars an hour during the negotiation with JCTA. And so taking that back to where it was will hopefully bring it some back. It's, it's not a huge number though.
And, and would that include field, I know we've lost a lot of field trip opportunities. Would they be able to drive for field trips and activity bus as well?
No, because they're on their work, they're, it's during their work, it has to be outside of work hours to get that overtime pay. We're already paying them.
Okay.
So if they're taking.
It could be activity.
So if it was after, like after hours, yes. But if it is two, or one to two o'clock to go to the zoo or something like that, no, they're already on, on the clock for that.
Okay. But if they're willing to drive so that their students can partake in those opportunities, so they.
She's jumping in.
Yeah, just, I want to clarify because it's very clear in the, the, um, attachments. This is just to drive the bus for transporting students like bus drivers.
Okay.
The supervision activity bus is still twenty-five dollars an hour.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I, as far as the other parts of transportation, I do think, um, the hubs are probably a, a great compromise and, and we might want to talk about that. I think one of the difficult parts, um, now is that our students who are already enrolled in a traditional or a magnet program, their kid, their, their parents chose those schools with transportation being an option for them. Um, and so if we move to, um, reducing our ridership, I, I agree that I think the hubs are probably, um, a good way to go. And I won't go into my long list of questions that I had about those. Um, rent liability and supervision were the first three things that came to mind. Um, have we got an answer on, based on our number, because I, I want to work backwards on this problem, or, uh, as I think through it. We have, we have a finite number of drivers, buses. How many students could we reasonably and efficiently transport? And then maybe we could work and see who, which riders we would have to eliminate or reduce services for. And I'm thinking of hubs as like reducing a service.
Okay.
So I, I would like to see like what our system, and that might be something that the outside, um, auditors do for us. But I think starting with how many could we reasonably do and then working backwards to fill those seats. Um, I don't know if that makes sense to anybody else, but that's how I'm looking at this.
It does. The, the challenge with that is the specificity of school choice. So I'm just going to use an example that if we had a student who lived off of Dixie Highway and chose to go to Atherton, they might be taking up, their first bus might only have seven students on it. And their second bus might have sixty students on it. And so it's just a little bit harder, uh, and I'm not saying it's impossible to, it, it's just not like, okay, how many bu, had bus drivers times by sixty, like that's the student. And so that choice fabric really makes it a little more challenging, but I'm sure we can do something like that.
So I know that we have a, I know I'm out of time, but I do still have questions that I think are important. Um, my kiddo is one of the kids who gets to school late anytime she does have to ride the bus. Thankfully I'm able to take her a couple of days a week. Last Thursday, I received the automated text at seven fifty-nine in the morning that her bus was going to be two hours late. Um, but her pickup time is like seven thirty, uh, seven thirty-five-ish. So had I not had a doctor's appointment and just happened to be home that day, I would have left her on the corner in the neighborhood and started heading toward work, which is forty-five minutes away. Um, and then my husband, he's another forty-five minutes away in the other direction. So, um, we're, we're living this, this bus life, um, along with a lot of the, the folks in the.
Most likely that was a late call in, um, you know, someone who may have called in sick at, at a very late time. Um, and so, you know, that happens, that happens with teachers. Unfortunately, when it's a bus driver, that, that makes it challenging. I can't say that for sure, but that's most likely what happened.
Sure. And I understand emergencies happen, but, um, just know that families are getting still those late notifications. And for two hours late, that would have been, you know, a substantial, obviously, part of the day. Um, because her route is almost a hour. She gets picked up at seven thirty-five and is still late to her, her school. Um, so that would have had kids getting to the school, what, three hours late?
Mm-hmm.
That day that had to ride the bus. Um, are we, I know this says on the bottom, um, data was not officially collected on these days. These numbers are shown or aver, sorry, this is tiny, averages from the previous week's data. So how did we do those averages? Like a percentage decrease? Is that what it was? Um, so I'm, I'm looking at this, this one. Katie?
I, I don't know what that is. I'm sorry.
Oh, um, number of buses with wait time after dismissal in the afternoon on the fifteenth. It has it estimated it being twelve. Um, that seems, that seems low from what I'm hearing from families. Um, and then I'm going to circle back to what I'm still concerned about, which is paying our teachers and the stipends to stay after while they're waiting for these, whether they're scheduled to be late or they're just late because of life. Um, I'm really concerned about the, the payment of that, of our staff, if we're going to be able to continue to sustain, um, supervision for our kiddos.
Well, I think we'll be able to sustain supervision. I know that's, that's challenging, but, um, you know, financially we'll con, we'll continue to support our schools with that.
And all of those funds are coming from central office. They're not being asked to take them from their.
So we are doing that month by month where a school submits their request of what they need. And obviously we have some that ask for an enormous amount of money. Um, but we are going through a vetting process to say what is a, an amount of money that is needed for you at, in September. And then we'll do the same in October. Um, and so, yes, all of that is covered. Now, if the school wants to do something, like keep every teacher after school, then they may be using some of their own funds to do that. But that's a whole different story than the supervision part of it.
And I should know this, but what is the regulatory, um, ratio for supervision after school? Like how many adults per children?
I don't believe there's a regulatory ratio for that. I don't believe, no.
Okay. But we're not asking like one or two teachers to supervise a hundred kids or fifty kids.
We should not be. I can't say that we should not be, no.
It happens. It is happening. Three hundred, four hundred.
Well, how about we get the schools to me and I'll be happy to go deal with it myself.
Um, I mean, honestly, we might need some folks from central office to help with these, with these supervisions after school some days. Um, I think our people are getting really, really burnt out and they're tired and they're, they're weary. Um.
I'll send central office there. I got no problem with that. I'll send central office there. We'll, we'll start on when we come back.
Yeah. And if you don't mind, I can answer the month by month. Uh, we do have it in I C, I T S where each principal is uploading a, uh, descriptive plan on how many they need, um, each day, whether it's A M or P M. And they tell exactly how many kids are staying, uh, for thirty minutes, the next thirty minutes, and how many adults they need to safely supervise those kids and how much it is. We have eighty-four schools who have submitted, forty-five have submitted for A M and P M, twenty-four for P M only, and another fourteen for A M. And we have, uh, approved every one of them.
Okay. That, I'm glad to see that it's improving. Or do we have plans from central office for a, activities to keep the kids engaged? I mean, I just, I just keep imagining twenty-five, forty kids sitting in a cafeteria for two hours and that's asking for trouble.
Yes. Dr. Greenwood have provided all the principals with their resource, uh, for, uh, uh, all digital, uh, platforms. And all principals and A I Cs will be trained on our, uh, I O C platform, uh, Imagine Learning classrooms. And that will put, uh, students on a, um, on a, on a personalized learning pathway for, uh, reading and for math, uh, K through eight.
And it's just screen time, so like an Edmentum kind of thing?
Very similar, very similar. There is, there's five pages of resources. So they have, uh, multiple options, uh, to, to, to pick from. So the, the biggest challenge is, uh, just being more, just knowing who and how many they're going to, um, be staying after. And that's what they're planning in I T S. That's what they're using to determine their needs.
Okay. And then I promise this will be my last one of the night, um, at least on this topic. Um, who's keeping track of the, I'm going to call it payroll, for lack of better terminology, of, um, our early childhood parents? That five dollar stipend. Who's going to keep track of who, like how many days did little Johnny's mom actually bring him? Those kinds of things. Um.
Eddie, you want to tackle that one?
And I'll tell you, my, my concern is our, our school clerks, our clerical staff and our, our, um, bookkeepers that are already stretched so thin and underpaid, that I hate putting more on them.
So just an attendance thing up there. I mean, what they already have to do is.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so basically we're building a whole new process, a whole new payment vehicle, um, around this program. So the only thing schools will be doing is taking attendance.
Okay. So our, our clerical staff is not going to have any additional paperwork or?
A few, a few small steps that they'll do. There will be a signup process that can be done online. Um, but they'll have to, um, uh, record attendance on a daily basis throughout the year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntosh. Dr. Cole?
Uh, thanks. Um, the, um, just upon first glance, the option two seems, uh, better to me, but of course I'm open to feedback, you know, and seeing how things evolve. Um, it's clear, seems pretty clear that we have to reduce ridership. I mean, I, I just don't see a way past that. Um, do, have we, so that we have the five dollars, I know some school systems, Philadelphia, I think, is paying families a hundred and fifty bucks a month. I'm, apologies if I have some of the details a little wrong, but have we thought about that or is that even legal in Kentucky? I don't even know if it's legal, but, um.
It is legal. For, you mean, do what we do with early childhood with all students?
Yeah.
Yes, that is legal to do that.
Have we thought about or looked at the numbers on paying families substantially more than?
You know, we are looking at if all early childhood families that we think, we estimated about half of them take advantage of this. It may end up being more than that. It's about a one point one million dollars for the year. That's about for a thousand students. Um, so if we were to do the same thing, I think we could look at that ratio to say, you know, if we did it for the fifteen thousand students, um, that are, you know, let's just say fifteen thousand, it'd be fifteen million dollars approximately. And so, but we also have to weigh that in, that every route we cut is a huge savings for us in the millions on a year. And so, you know, that is something I think we'll have to bring to you and say, okay, we're cutting a route, bus driver, the insurance, all of the gas that goes with that route and transferring it to money for parents. And so I can't, this is our first dive into it, uh, but we would bring you some, some numbers on that.
Yeah. I mean, that's something I'd like to see us seriously look at. And thankfully, I mean, I think we'll have some evidence from other school districts as to whether or not it's working there or not. Um, so, uh, yeah.
And we may go to Philadelphia to see that and.
Yeah.
Talk to them.
Great. I mean, and I'm one of the, like, my kid used to ride the bus, loved to ride the bus, goes to a magnet school, you know? So, um, you know, we were able to transition to taking him, uh, and his nieces and nephews to school in Carpool. But, um, but people in that position that I'm, I, you know, it was a convenience, you know, to be able to put a kid on the bus. You know, it was a few extra hours during the day where, you know, we got to, my wife and I got to work and, you know, not, not to have to, to do childcare. But the only kids that were legally required to transport are E C E kids, is that correct? Or?
And some homeless McKinney Vent.
And McKinney Vent, right.
But that's a smaller number, but yes.
So, you know, whatever, I think it's much more important, if we offer a service to families, that service needs to be reliable. Um, we can't, in my view, offer a service, um, because we'd like to give families the option, but it turns out to not really be reliable. You know, we, it's, I think, much better just to be clear with families. I'm sorry, like, we're not legally required. This is a service that we've been offering. We can no longer do it. Um, and allow those families to, like mine, to make adjustments. Um, you know, it, it, it would have been easier, I mean, you know, to make that adjustment, just speaking for myself, with some planning as opposed to, you know, the second week of school, uh, the second week of school this year. Um, the, uh, and just, just to remind everybody, you know, because there's a lot of narratives out there and a lot of finger pointing in the community, especially state legislators. But just to remind everybody that the, the Kentucky State Legislature has underfunded transportation since at least two thousand and four. Uh, twenty years of consistent underfunding despite their legally required obligation to, to do so. So state legislators can really just shut up permanently about this, um, issue until they fund transportation at one hundred percent. You have absolutely no, uh, no, uh, standing on which to, to criticize something that you've deliberately tried to sabotage over the last twenty years. Um, I do want to say, one of the, um, one of the things I appreciate most about what Chief Kessinger said in his comments, uh, on the different issue, obviously, was the importance of gathering facts and relying on facts to make, um, decisions. Um, I'm frankly really tired of some of my colleagues making policy decisions based upon emails that they get from, from folks that are, uh, perhaps based in reality and perhaps not. Um, a lot of what I hear from some of my colleagues about, uh, things that they hear flies in the face of what research tells us is the case. Um, you know, uh, there's a big, shut, please, please don't talk while I'm talking. Um, there's a real corrosive narrative in our society right now about, um, being fearful of children that I'm pretty disgusted to hear a few of my colleagues reinforce, um, tonight. I think it's corrosive. It's not based on evidence. It's frankly racially coded. Uh, it's not what the research says. So, um, uh, if there are specific fact-based instances that we need to look at, you know, let's do that. But to make decisions that based on hearsay anecdotes and things that are not corroborated isn't helpful. Um, I'm also, you know, really sick of hearing my colleagues talk about underappreciated staff members, um, when, uh, you know, yes, let's give them raises. Let's raise taxes so we can give them raises. Um, you know, one of my colleagues who is talking most about that, you know, called in from the airport, uh, to specifically vote against a tax raise this year, uh, so that we could do, among other things, raise taxes. So, you know, there's a lot of board members, some board members that really would love to have their cake and eat it too and, um, just like to complain about, uh, things and, and not really offer, uh, positive courageous decisive action to help actually solve the problems. Um, you know, we've got a problem right now with transportation. We've got a problem right now with, um, student outcomes. And, um, when we don't focus on facts and research, it absolutely, um, weakens, uh, and, uh, really makes the job that we have harder, um, to, to help kids, uh, achieve more. So, um, yeah, so, um, that's, that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Cole. This brings an end to our transportation update. Thank you for this work. Thank you for this work and for this presentation. We do have persons requesting to address the board, but because none of those individuals are speaking on agenda topics or any issues related to, to the consent agenda, they will speak after, uh, we have voted on the consent agenda. Ms. McIntosh has asked to pull down Y, uh, on the consent agenda and B B on the consent agenda. Ms. Duncan has asked to pull down A A on the consent agenda and X on the consent agenda. I would now like to entertain a motion to approve the, the consent agenda with the exception of Y, B B, A A, and X. Ms. Duncan, a second please. Ms. McIntosh, all in favor? Okay. You in favor? Okay. Thank you. Let's start with Y, Ms. McIntosh.
I only have one quick question because the rest of it was already answered. I didn't know we'd have time to discuss it. Um, the families that would receive the stipend, is that, is that income that they would have to file on their taxes?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that we probably wanna make sure that they, that they know that prior to accepting it because I think we've probably all been in that situation where we get bumped a little bit and, um.
I believe we have it as a part of the notification plan. They have to, is it a W nine? Is that what you told me? And so they have to, so we are putting that as a part of the information for the families.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, we don't have any choice in that, by the way.
Right, right. Thank you.
Okay. B B?
B B was the school cal- oh, just with the calendar, um, I'm gonna vote to approve it, but I, I do have concerns about November sixth. I think we're gonna maybe expect low attendance that day where a lot of families have already planned and paid for vacations um, over that weekend, and I expect our staff too. So we might wanna just be proactively thinking about, um, increasing subs or something that day.
Yeah, I would agree with you, but it's unfortunately the same if we go into June as well, so.
Oh, absolutely agree.
But I agree a hundred percent with you, so thank you.
Right, thank you.
All right. Ms. Duncan, A A?
Well, A A, I, I, I'm just, um, wondering, we added, uh, some language to the, uh, the policy concerning dress code. And I'm just wondering why we needed to add that language, uh, concerning, uh, directing S B D M councils to allow students to dress according to their gender identity. Uh, we have an anti-discrimination policy, um, a- and, uh, Dr. Polio, are you aware of any S B D M councils that have violated the anti-discrimination policy with their dress code?
I am not.
See, the, the board is supposed to set guardrails for dress. Uh, nothing unhealthy, nothing unsafe, nothing disruptive to the learning environment. Then the S B D M councils are supposed to tell the kids how to dress. That's what they do. So I, I just feel like with the addition of this language, we're kind of encroaching on S B D M council authority, uh, for dress codes. So I, I don't, for me, I don't, I don't see the necessity of, of that language being added there because we already have, uh, an anti-discrimination, uh, policy in place that, that covers all of these things so that it wouldn't, they, they wouldn't have a policy that would violate that.
Understood. Um, what we are following is the resolution that was passed by this board six to one in June, and that wording was a part of that resolution. Um, talking with our general counsel about that resolution, uh, the board voting six to one essentially puts us in the spot of, that's a, that now is something that we are charged to, to implement. Um, so that is why that is in front of you.
Does that mean that all of the parts of that resolution will have policies behind them?
Uh, the resolution is, uh, we're in the process of fully implementing all of it. And so those, um, portions of the resolution that lend themselves towards a policy or procedure will have those. Um, a large bulk of the resolution were things that were already being implemented. I will add that the language does not change. Um, the additional language in the policy pursuant to the resolution does not change practice in that, as you stated, the non-discrimination policy for gender expression and gender identity has been in our policy, uh, for a long time, as it should be. And we have counseled, um, S B D Ms about that, um, and particularly hairstyles and things. And so they do need some guidance because their policies absolutely cannot violate our non-discrimination policy. So I don't see it changing, uh, it's additional verbiage pursuant to the resolution, but I don't see it changing practice at all as we've been enforcing the non-discrimination policy for years.
Right, I didn't, I didn't see the necessity for that, that, because of that. Well, thank you.
All right, Ms. Duncan, X?
Forgot about the X. X was the, uh, I think it's the recommendation that we, um, increase or we pay teachers who drive buses their hourly rate. And, uh, appreciate that recommendation wholeheartedly. Uh, would like for us to, to consider what we could do, uh, for our maintenance people who have spoken about, uh, being willing to do things like that, being, being willing to step up and drive buses. But, uh, they wouldn't tell, they've been told that they could do that at their hourly rate rather than the bus driver hourly rate. And, uh, it just seems like we should consider that and think about how we could offer them the bus driver hourly, hourly rate if they're taking on that responsibility.
To their union representation. So we'll, we can discuss that with them.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. May I please hear a motion to approve items Y, B B, A A, and X? Ms. McIntosh? Need a second?
Yep.
Mr. Marshall, all in favor? Thank you. Mr. Craig, were you willing to be recognized?
Yes. Is Laconda Martin or Chandra Lee here? Okay, glad to have you. This is a statement that I must read. In accordance with Board Policy zero one dot four two one, the board expects that persons who have signed up to address the board will limit their remarks to the subject they listed at the time they signed up, that their presentation will not include any defamatory or abusive marks about the subject, and that they will present their remarks in a manner that is consistent with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Also, in accordance with Board Policy, the board reserves the right to limit, extend, or terminate discussion at any moment. Discussion of personnel matters is not permitted as the board has no legal authority regarding such matters. A speaker may not initiate charges or complaints against an individual district employee. Speakers before the entire board are not allowed to use props, displays, or any other objects during presentations. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board and may not share these minutes with any other speaker. At the end of the two and a half minutes, a bell will sound once. You will have thirty seconds to finish your statement. At the end of three minutes, the bell will sound twice, indicating your time is up. The superintendent will look into the speaker's issues and if necessary, represent the board in following up on the recommended action to the board.
You said all of it real fast, so I might have missed something. Um, a lot of y'all went way over y'all of five minutes. So I hope I can get, have grace because y'all said a lot here today, and I can't respond to everything. I have to come over here and say what I had to say. Has my three minutes started yet?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I heard that bus drivers is not turning in referrals because nothing is being done about it. Is that against policy and procedure? Is policy and procedure to do a referral? Um, do y'all know what happened on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, around four fifty-eight P M? Nobody knows. Okay, well, my son was let off the bus at the wrong, allowed to get off the bus at the wrong bus stop. He was taken back gunpoint, forced into an alley where he was beat by four grown kids. When I contacted the compound, they didn't know anything about it. And at the end of the conversation, after I told her that my son don't even remember the incident, he has four staples in his head and they robbed him, she told me that I need to talk to my son about getting off at the wrong bus stop. That was her response. I hate that I'm talking to y'all, y'all just staring at me because I don't even know y'all thoughts because a lot of the times I think y'all just don't even care. Nobody cares now. Nobody cares. I really don't even know what to say no more as I'm standing up here. But I do wanna say, why y'all keeping the data of the, uh, the data to the numbers of the times the police are called about students who are out of control or whatever ha- what have you? Are y'all keeping the same data for the parents who call and talk about their students being hurt in J C P S or on the bus stops and nothing is done about it? Cause I'm keeping data. I've talked about, I've talked to about fifty parents who have complained about their students being hurt on the bus stop or in J C P S, and nothing has been done about it. Y'all also talked about students who have I E Ps. While navigating around the federal law, y'all about to be in trouble. Y'all going against the federal law by not providing what is required by the law to a lot of students who ha- who have I E Ps in the classroom as far, and as far as transportation goes. Like, I wanna talk to somebody. I wanna hear what we're gonna do about this, my personal situation with my son who was just here with me. And he had to go home and get ready for school. Also, do y'all know that Oberhous was tonight? Look how empty this room is. A lot of parents ain't heard today to address the board because they can't be heard because they either at.
Is Laconda Martin here? Okay, that's all of our speakers for tonight. At eight twenty-one, this meeting, uh, will be adjourned. May I hear a motion to adjourn, Mr. Marshall? Second to by, Ms. McIntosh, all in favor? Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.